Before we get started, we've received notice that there's a yellow Camaro in the parking lot that has its keys on their hoods, so if that's your car, you might want to go grab them. Call to order for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the true republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, your call please. Stephanie Boyler.
Here.
Haley Kizer.
Here.
Anthony Reynolds.
Here.
James Douggs.
Here.
Brian Benziana.
Here.
Debbie Koalas.
Here.
Dave Hart.
Here.
Michael.
Here.
Aubrey.
Here.
Thank you, Jamie. At this time, I want to request for a moment of silence in remembrance of Mrs. Melissa Bean, a devoted Herman educator and leader who passed away this past weekend. Thank you. Next, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of April 7?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
I just need to amend one thing. I should have abstained from that vote. So we can just change it as abstaining or you need to retake the vote? I apologize. I need to abstain from that vote due to conflict of interest on the indemnification of the April 7 meeting.
Okay, any other discussion? Do you want to retract your motion to approve the minutes?
You can propose an amendment to the motion to say I move to amend the motion to...
I move to amend the motion to include changing my vote on the indemnification to abstaining versus voting no. Is there a second to that?
Second.
I don't think you can.
I don't think we can change.
You can't change the minutes of what happened. You can only reflect what happened.
So you can't change a vote once it's happened? We've taken a vote in the past and re-voted, so do we need to make a motion to re-vote on that particular item?
I'd rather not. It doesn't change the vote.
It doesn't change the vote. On a technicality, I wanted to reflect as it should have accurately. That was my mistake.
But we can't go back and change it, so I would suggest we keep it as is.
I will address it through other channels if necessary. I just wanted to be accurate. It doesn't change the vote. I just want it accurate.
I think, thank you for the question. I think we can reflect in tonight's minutes that Mrs. Kizer made this request and acknowledged that the vote, upon her reflection, the vote should have been an abstention, but you are correct that the minutes of how the vote was taken and however the vote should stand.
And it doesn't change the outcome, so there's no reason for us to re-vote.
That's correct.
I agree. Thank you. So we're back to, do we have an original motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting from April 7?
So moved. Second.
Any extensions?
No.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion cares? Next, we have the superintendent report.
Thank you. Good evening, school committee members, students and staff, and community members. I hope you all enjoyed a relaxing spring break, and we're looking forward to the many wonderful activities planned for this final quarter of the school year. I am thoroughly enjoying my visits to the schools and have attended Literacy Night and the K-1 Concert and Curriculum Night at Patricia Doran Elementary School, Spring into Arts, and an awesome skateboard assembly at Herman Middle School, and the Junior ROTC Awards, baseball, softball, and tennis games at Herman High School. I even hiked Little Chick Hill last weekend at the suggestion of Mrs. Kelly's third graders. Our students are so fortunate to be connected with smart, talented educators, and I'm reminded each day of the wonderful enthusiasm for learning present in our classrooms. On tonight's agenda is a recommendation to hire Mr. David Mason as Director of Special Services effective on or about July 1. Many of you know Mr. Mason from his previous work in Herman as a teacher and Assistant Director of Special Services, and we're excited at the prospect of working with him again. Cindy Badger continues her wonderful work as our director until the end of June, and then her retirement journey begins. This week is National Teacher Appreciation Week, and it's a great time to tell the teachers in your lives how much you value them. I grew up in a small town and was privileged to have teachers who made me want to be just like them. That's ultimately what began my journey into education and into being hired as a middle school teacher. That's how it works. If you get too close to teachers, you catch their dreams. Finally, this is Michael's last committee meeting with us as a high school student. I attended the JROTC Awards banquet on Friday and cheered on as both Michael and Aubrey were recognized for their outstanding leadership and integrity. Congratulations to you both, and thank you for serving as representatives this year at our meetings.
Next, I want to recognize Michael for his two years that he has spent on the school committee with us. Next, the committee will go have a seat, and we are going to hear from Peter Hall for the audit presentation.
Peter, thank you for joining us this evening. I didn't expect you all set up here to go.
Okay.
I am leaving this side of the audience manually, so I will relay questions to you if there are.
Okay. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Okay, great. So quick question. Do you folks have the PowerPoint presentation already up on our screen or on a projector, or should I be sharing my screen?
If you could share your screen, that would be wonderful.
Awesome. Okay, so let's see. So do you folks see the front page of this PowerPoint handout?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. All right, I'm going to dive right in then. Thank you for having me this evening by Zoom to discuss this most recently completed audit. I understand that you have a very busy agenda this evening, so I thought that what I would do in order to expedite the conversation is really just focus on this PowerPoint presentation in which I've called out what I think are the most relevant, most important pieces of financial information relating to the school department. I really do want to especially thank Jamie and her whole team for all of their hard work in both preparing for the audit and also in terms of answering all my questions and providing documentation as we work through the audit procedures. A quick thanks as well to Hank Barrett for his work in preparing the year-end formal financial statements. So I'm going to move right along here, and I'll start off by just providing a quick overview of the audit process and the results of the audit. In terms of the process, the fieldwork started in December, continued into January. As I mentioned, Jamie and her team were extremely well prepared and very helpful throughout the audit process, and then we wound up issuing the reports at the end of the month of March. In terms of the results of the audit, the single most important thing that I could share with you is that both with respect to the financial statement audit as well as the federal compliance audit, the town, of which obviously school is a segment, received totally clean audit opinions both on your financial statements and also in terms of your adherence to federal compliance requirements. Additionally, we do, in this type of audit, when we're performing both a financial as well as a compliance that we are required, seek to perform some measure of testing of your internal controls and accounting procedures and processes. And in the course of doing that work, we were to identify weaknesses or efficiencies in those internal controls or those processes which we required actually to inform you of that fact in writing, and as you see, we did not identify any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in your internal controls. I also would point out that there were no audit adjustments required as part of this engagement. So all of those things really speak to the thoroughness with which your finance function carries out their duties at the end and the work that they put into all of us. Did have a handful of advisory comments. These are not findings or internal control weaknesses or anything like that. They're observations of things that we think are worth consideration on your part going forward, and a couple of policies that I commented on, employee beverage and refreshment policy, as well as a reserves policy, and then also a comment regarding the spend down of your school and Christian fund balance, and I'll speak to that at the end of this PowerPoint. But all in all, very strong results in terms of the actual audit itself. So I'm going to move on to the next slide. And like many municipal entities, probably the single most important number that people are always curious about is, hey, what's my unassigned or undesigned money fund balance in the general fund? Basically, what do I have for money on hand, not just cash, but my financial resources at the end of the year that are not subject to any particular stipulation or limitation or restriction on how those dollars are used. It's essentially like a savings account, if you will. And so what I've done here is I've been tracking the components of your general fund fund balance over the last number of years and breaking it up between committed and assigned. And honestly, the distinction between committed and assigned is a little bit arcane. The important thing is that both committed and assigned fund balances have restrictions of some sort attached to them, but then after you carve all that money out, whatever you left over, whatever you have left over, that's your unassigned general fund balance. And I do want to, I know you're already well aware of this, but I do want to call your attention to a significant drop in that unassigned fund balance. It's actually been dropping pretty much every year for the last four or five years. And at one point, that was a good thing, right? Because the state has rules that limit how much you can accumulate in your general fund, unassigned fund balance. Now, it's a little bit like the pendulum. It has gone the other way, and at the end of 2024, your unassigned general fund fund balance was about $940,000, and that represents only about 5% of your total general fund budget. And on the one hand, that is in keeping with what the state limitations starting in FY '26 will revert to around that matter for the last, I don't know how many years. They had bumped that limitation up to 9%, and starting in FY '26, it will return to where it's always been in the past 5%. But you're certainly, you'd be within the state guidelines with that 5% if you go forward a couple of years, but it is something at the same time to just keep an eye on, because one thing about an unsigned fund balance is that certainly in the last five years, we've seen a lot of unexpected events transpire. We continue to do that, impacting education throughout the country, and having some level of general fund balance that you've got tucked away. And you could even, one of the ways to accomplish that goal of having resources tucked aside in your general fund is simply to put an assignment on some of those dollars to make sure that you comply with the state requirement, but at the same time have resources that you've tucked aside in the event of some unexpected eventuality. Now, on this next slide, here I'm looking at the general fund's major revenue lines comparing your budget versus your actual. And what you can see is, for the most part, a lot of the line items were pretty close one way or the other to budget. The local assessment's obviously was smacked up right on. The biggest negative variance was in the reserve transfers in revenue line. The budget had called for about $296,000 in reserve monies to be transferred into the general fund, and at the end of the day, essentially none of that or almost none of that was deemed to be necessary in FY '24 given the status of various projects. So that's essentially the biggest driver between budget versus actual. The other thing I would point out is the budget called for the school department to wind up using a million dollars of surplus. And essentially, as we've talked about, I think in the past, use of surplus, it's not an actual revenue in the traditional sense, but it's a financing source that is used to help balance your budget. Because of some expense variances that we'll see on the next slide where actual came in under budget, you wound up not actually needing to use that full million surplus that had originally been budgeted. You wound up having to use about $826,000. So that's it only on the revenue side. Now, next, we're going to look at the general fund expenditure categories. And as you can see, with respect to every single line item here, the budgets in question were either fully expended right down to the last dollar or pretty much fully expended without not a lot of big dollar variances there. All told, you under-expended your general fund budget by $176,000. I guess one thing I would call your attention to on that, just as a way of putting that in perspective, is that $176,000, that represents less than one percentage point of your total budget, so that's pretty close budgeting and expenditure management. I think anyone would agree with that. The next few slides are really just graphic ways of looking at some of the information we've already discussed. On this slide, I'm just showing graphically the relative proportion of your total general fund revenues that come from local assessments, i.e. the property taxes, versus intergovernmental revenues. Those are the two big revenue sources you have within the general fund. And I think what's interesting here to note is, this may be something that taxpayers, for example, are interested in noting, the local assessment share of the total budget has actually been declining slightly every year for the last three or four years, while at the same time, for the most part, the intergovernmental portion has been increasing. So I think that's just an interesting data point that some folks might want to take note of. Now, the next slide, I kind of do the same sort of thing on the general fund expenditure side of the present, the financials. And what I've done here is simply those 11 or 12 expenditure and transfer line items that we just looked at, where many of them were smacked up right on budget or some had been under-expended by relatively small amounts. What I've done here is just carve out that same data in this pie chart and really only to depict graphically, A, like all schools in May, the wide variety of functions that go on within the school unit in order to essentially provide education services to your students. But in particular, if you add your school administration and your system administration cost centers, that aggravates to about nine percentage points of the total. And then somewhat arbitrarily, I guess, if you lump your facilities maintenance and debt service in together as well, that's another 16% of the point. But what that means to May is that of every dollar that is being expended through the general fund, roughly 75 cents is going in some fashion to directly serve your student and your student body, whether it's in the form of regular instruction or special ed or other instructions, transportation, et cetera. And that's actually pretty consistent with some of the other schooliness that I've looked at, but I do think it's, again, an important thing for people to keep in mind when they're looking at the total school budget. Oh, the next slide is just the prior year's pie chart. Nothing really significantly has changed compared to the prior year. And then the last slide here, I've been tracking the school lunch program fund balance over the last number of years. And I started doing this back when the school lunch program was actually carrying deficits on its balance sheet. And what you see here is really for the last four years, that school deficit has pretty steadily been reversed and grown into a pretty substantial positive fund balance as we continue to receive revenues in excess of the costs that are being incurred to run that program. I just wanted to comment on this a little bit further. That run-up in your school lunch fund balance over the last couple of years, that's primarily, if not almost entirely, a function of additional state subsidy payments that the Department of Education had started sort of of their own volition to start sending out towards the tail end of the pandemic. And so that's really the big driver as to why the fund balance of this program has grown. Now, interestingly, even though the state never looked at it for some amount, of course, and though the state was providing a lot of funding, they're now coming back, they've come back to Herman and they're coming back to a number of other school financing authorities or school food program authorities, actually saying, okay, we gave you all this money. You haven't spent it yet. We really want you to spend it. Their target is that your year-end fund balance should not exceed three months' worth of expenditures over the course of the year. So that number, if you round that into 2024, is about $180,000. So you've got like $215,000 by that calculation in additional school lunch program fund balance. And I know that you folks have been in touch with the state, working on plans by which you're going to be spending that down this year and perhaps going into FY 2026. And that was actually the other comment that I referred to at the beginning of the presentation, just to encourage the school department to continue to monitor that so that you do in back spend that down for legitimate, for appropriate purposes within that program. That is actually what I had for prepared remarks, but I would be happy to answer any questions that I can.
Does not appear that we have any questions in here.
All right, then I would love to get on with the rest of your meeting. Yes?
Yes, I have to, I think I have to repeat since I think he's going to get into...
I'll make it a little bit easier.
Hi, Peter. I'm just curious, with the work that you do with other schools throughout the state, you're very familiar with the facilities that we have here in Herman. Can we look at ways to operate more efficiently or generate additional revenue? As you go through the process and complete the audit, have you come across any ideas that we could consider to generate additional revenue for the school? And I guess on the other side, are there ways that we could possibly reduce our operating expenses in line with what you're seeing at other schools?
That's a really good question, and I'll be honest with you. As I work through the typical audit process, I tend to somewhat get blinders on a little bit, and I'm focused on, are the numbers correct, basically? Are the financial statements correct? And obviously, when I step back then and look at the financials, and is there some big explain or some big red flag in terms of the financial health or wellbeing of the client, then I'll speak to that. That being said, it's a really good question, and I'd be happy to put some thought into that. I am working on a number of other audits currently, and I can keep that in mind as I wrap some of these other jobs up. I'd be happy to maybe share with Jamie if that would be the appropriate channel to then perhaps provide some thoughts back to all of you. If anything comes to mind, does that sound like a fair approach?
Yes, thank you very much.
All right. If there's nothing else for me, I'll let you get on with the rest of your meeting, but thank you again for having me in. Okay, you too. And I'll, okay, you too.
We'll now move on to the student reports.
Herman High School is hosting its Through the Ages Cabaret on Friday, May ninth at seven P. M. The Herman Track Team hosts its first-ever home meet Thursday, May fifteenth at three thirty P. M. The Track Team is going to Bangor for a meet on Friday this week. The baseball and softball teams are playing at MDI tonight at four thirty, so we'll see how that goes. Prom is on Friday, May seventeenth at the Cross Insurance Center, and underclassmen will be undergoing NWEA testing this week.
Next weekend, Key Club will assist neighbors supporting neighbors' community pantry in collecting food out of mailboxes from Herman and other surrounding towns. Last month, Best Buddies Clubs throughout all of Maine joined together at Cameron Stadium for our Best Buddies Inclusivity Walk. Last weekend, Jericho C held their thirtieth annual banquet. In a couple weeks, we will help support the Spring Special Olympics along with some Coles Land Transportation Museum work. Class meetings will be held soon to elect new student council members, class office members, and to find a new replacement for Michael as I move into his spot. And we also have our academic awards night coming up the fourteenth. And students taking AP classes will take their AP exams in the next couple of weeks. Good luck to everyone taking those.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the professional discussion of policy. Come in.
We met and the policies that we, oops, sorry. We met, the policies that we talked about were JG, discipline and punishment. Recommendations were to abolish JG as student discipline. Policy JK takes the place of JG and was recently reviewed in February of twenty twenty five. The next policy was acceptance of resignations. Policy CGGC, the recommendation was to add the language requiring a signed letter of resignation. Student scholarships is a new policy, establish a Herman, Herman area scholarship fund to contain current and prospective donated scholarship funds in one account. It was suggested that modifying the last paragraph to this policy to state student liaisons must be on the committee their junior or senior years and attend all applicable meetings during that time unless excused by the superintendent. Return to work and reasonable accommodations. Policy Administrative Procedure GBGE-R. Approval of this policy may qualify Herman for ten percent in total savings and risk management insurance. Safety Program EB. Approval of this policy may qualify Herman for ten percent in total savings and risk management. Policy Child Find IHBAC contains new language which has been brought up to match the state
Thank you. Next, we'll have the finance subcommittee.
Yeah, the finance committee met after policy. The first thing we took up was a review of the twenty twenty five revenue, and there's an anticipated three hundred thousand dollar increase in the revenue for this year. The second subject we discussed was two contracts, two contracts. One was under Tyler Technology for substitute teacher management, which would be a new subscription for next year. And then the contract for the NWEA testing, both those contracts will be up for vote later tonight. The NWEA contract was within the budget projection that was provided for FY twenty six. A committee member asked for the extracurricular stipends for the total cost of those, and we have those available. And then there was a proposal to install exterior lighting at Patricia Durham School through the Greater Athletic Complex Committee. We discussed that and came up with four bullet points of the possibility of looking how that connection is done through the school or the scoreboard. We did discuss the need for lighting at the elementary school, and so our recommendation was to draft a memorandum of agreement regarding who is responsible for energy costs and maintenance of the poles and lights. And Dr. Sargent will schedule a meeting and communicate with the relevant individuals on that. And then the last subject discussed was the Director of Finance recommended a change to the flexible benefits plan, and that will be voted on tonight.
Thank you. There's a number of people here this evening who wish to speak, and we'll make sure that everyone has an opportunity to address the committee. There's been recent allegations accusing the school committee and administration of interfering with the child's education. The school committee and administration has followed district policies, state and federal statute.
Good evening, everyone. It might be helpful to have a little bit of background information as you prepare for your comments this evening. Good evening. As many of you know, I started on April first, just about five weeks ago, and I'm thrilled to be here. This is a wonderful community, and I hope to be here for a very long time. I was a superintendent in New Jersey in several districts and have a very good understanding of how school committee members conduct themselves. It's often said that school committee members are here to ensure that the schools are well-run, not to run the schools. And so therefore, we have policies and we have state statutes that really dictate the role a school committee member can play within a school. And typically, working in a school, especially in the capacity as one of our committee members has been doing, became, in my professional opinion, problematic. As I said, I started April first, was meeting and talking with lots of people, and so some things came, my realizations came a little bit more slowly to some things, but within about a week, I had a full understanding that we had one of our school committee members working as a one-to-one nurse in our community, which is, we all know, our nurses are saviors and angels, and it's important valued work. But it also, in this particular instance, creates the prospect of an unbiased or a biased school committee member, which can be difficult because our school committee are the final determination often when it comes to school expulsion matters or teacher termination matters. And we want to make sure as community members that our school committee is unbiased and impartial and can really make decisions based on the facts instead of on relationships that they build within our schools. I grew up in a time where, you know, we didn't air our dirty laundry. That was just how we grew up in the sixties and seventies. There wasn't internet, and it was easy to really keep matters to yourselves. And I conduct myself like that, both professionally and personally. And so when I learned that we had our school committee member working as a one-to-one nurse, I met with that school committee member in my office in private to have a dignified, respectful conversation, shared my professional opinion that this was a violation of our district policy and of our state statute for ethics. And that was really the extent of it. I do not have authority to terminate. I don't have authority to interfere with a student's IEP or their much-needed services. And so I asked that school committee member to consider what would make the most sense and to respond back within about a week, week and a half, with what that committee member thought would be a responsible, appropriate next step. And that was really the end of it. There are a few things that could happen here, and I'll be quiet in a moment and let everyone have their comments, and then to the extent that we can respond either tonight or later, if you've left your contact information, I am happy to do that. I think the one thing nobody wants is to see a committee member resign from their work on the school committee. It's important work, it's volunteer work, but these are people who are elected to the position, and whether that person chooses to continue or not should really be in the hands of the people. Another option would be to remove oneself from working with that agency, with that student. And again, this is a school committee member who's built a very nice relationship with the family, and that's important. A third possibility, and again, I don't know the players here because I'm new and I don't know the nursing agency involved here, but I would imagine that approaching the nursing agency and explaining the situation and seeing if maybe the agency needed a little bit of time to find a replacement, and until that time, the committee member be able to still maintain their role in the school with an eventual, eventual end date to that, that I think would be a very reasonable stance. But again, those are not my decisions to make. I certainly would be open to any of those conversations from our school committee member. And so with that, I appreciate your attention to my explanation. I'll quiet down so that folks who have signed the paper can come up and leave their comments.
So for public comment, this is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on agenda items, contribute information that may be of interest to the school committee, or ask clarifying questions. Please wait to be recognized and identify yourself before speaking. This is not the time to register complaints or promote a personal agenda. Please remember that you may not identify any person by name or job function, and we'd like to welcome Jolene Schoel.
My name is Jolene. I am Natalia Schoel's mother. The nurse works for an agency, which the superintendent does know the agency because she gave a letter and it stated the nursing agency. So that was a lie, and we shouldn't be here to lie. We should be here for the children. That this, being on the school board is not a power trick. You're elected to serve the children, the school, and the parents, and you should act like that. Sitting back here witnessing, watching you guys, watching especially two of you that I'm looking at with the power and the high and mighty, that's disgusting, the way you interact with people. You should be ashamed. Anyways, I'm here today to let this district know, you pushed us too far. Your leadership has taken retaliatory action against our devoted private, you understand what private is, employed nurse, targeting not only her, but my daughter. Our disabled daughter has been unable to attend school due to our nursing shortage. We have three nursing agencies, three that work for us. We just now, just now have coverage after a year, have full coverage for overnighters, overnighters. We were blessed to have this nurse come on board and be able to send our daughter to school. We lost our Thursday nurse, January, no, it was December, and this nurse came on the end of January. So Natalia has missed thirty-three days of school, thirty-three. And with six weeks left of school, she's going to miss a total of thirty-eight because she can't go on Thursdays, because we were told not to have the nurse go. Everything was cleared well in advance when we hired the nurse. But suddenly, we went through the principal, we went through the assistant principal, we went through the teachers, they loved her. They had nothing bad to say, nothing. But suddenly now, the school tells the nurse she can't be with Talia in the school, forcing our daughter to have to stay home and not receive an education. This goes against everything a school should stand for. All your flag signs about inclusion are proof of your hypocrisy on full display. There's a member that has gone into the school and taught, and that is a fact. You have no right to remove our nurse. She doesn't work for you, she doesn't work for the school, she hasn't done anything wrong, and your actions making my daughter suffer again because of this district, and it doesn't stop there.
I'd ask you to finish up your comments, please.
I am, I have comments. Last fall, on November fifth, an incident in the science lab caused it to fill with smoke. Everybody got, everybody got out of the school except for my daughter. She was locked in the stairwell for an hour. Where the smoke originated, having to withstand smoke, blaring alarms for nearly an hour. And the school tried to cover it up, blamed the fire chief. Each of my children have been a victim to your failed leadership. You have taken this too far. You've proven you're incapable to do what's right, and it's time to be held accountable, not just for my children, but for every children, every child that comes to Herman, all the parents. They should be wanting to come to you and speak out, but they don't, probably because you sit up there high and mighty and not caring.
Thank you for your public comment. Next up is Steve Thomas.
Good evening. I'd like to follow up on those comments. Let's be honest, the conflict letter that was sent out last month is all about retaliation and controlling the general election, not conflict of interest. Anyone who doubts this claim should ask, why now? I can provide many examples of real conflicts allowed by the school where no action was taken that prove this action is politically motivated. For example, I refer to policy BCC adopted May second, two thousand and sixteen on nepotism. Employment, it shall be the policy of the Herman School Department not to employ, as Herman School Department staff, any person who is a member of the immediate family of a Herman School Committee member or of the superintendent. A recently elected school committee member has a daughter who is a teacher in the school
I just want to remind you not to name any positions, please.
and ran his campaign. Where is the conflict letter? Next, under nepotism, is a section called Supervision and Evaluation. It states, no person shall be employed in or assigned to a position that is within the administrative supervision of a member of his or her immediate family, nor in a position in which he or she is supervised or evaluated and ruled or impart by a member of his or her immediate family. I guess I'll leave it that there was a leader in the high school who was able to hire his wife in September of twenty one. Where's the conflict letter there? The school committee member that is being discussed here tonight has been providing medical care for this student at home and at school for months. The chair and vice chair have been unrelenting in their efforts to silence her regarding the religious discrimination lawsuit, and this letter shows that they will stop at nothing to accomplish this goal. Targeting an innocent student to hurt Mrs. Kizer, oh, sorry, I wasn't supposed to mention her name, is a new low for the administration and school committee. I would encourage the administration to apologize to the student and Mrs. Kizer, as well as her employer. Thank you.
Thank you. We'd like to now like to welcome Ed Marsh.
Hi there, thank you. A lot of the information's already been stated, and I appreciate the superintendent giving background on this issue. My biggest concern is similar to what everyone has stated, is that it's the, it's not what happened, it's when it happened, and I do like the fact that you're stating that there's potential for option C or number three. The student should not have to go through not being able to attend school while this gets worked out. If there's a conflict, there's a conflict. I don't have the answers to that. It just seems very disheartening that you start in January providing services, and I understand the superintendent is new and is probably looking at everything, but the committee members weren't, and they were here, and they were part of this. And that's the biggest concern I have, is not going, you know, into the next year or anything like that, but the seven more days that it appears the student could be impacted. That's the care here for the student, is to make sure that that student has the care that they need for the remainder of this term. Whatever goes on here, whether it's political, whether it isn't, it doesn't matter. It's all about this student, this school, this This school, this school district has great educators, great teachers, does a great job for our students. I have two students, I have two children that went through this from K to 12. They're great. They got a great education, they live in the town, they bought houses in town, and I hope someday we'll have grandkids that come here as well. And I think it's important, stop having the negativity take the focus off of the great achievements of the teachers and the staff that's here. So I ask that everyone come together and work to have this student have the services they need with whichever nurse they determine is the best spin, and try and get to that option three. That's what I ask. And real quick, I also appreciate the fact that the greater community, I think I've got it wrong, it's been a while, for delighting on the elementary school, please take advantage of that. If you look at the high school and you see what a great thing has been done, take advantage of that, look at how much greater it could be. So appreciate that you're looking into that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Natalia Schobel.
Hi, Natalia Schobel. I'm 14 years old. I have OT, PT and stuff, and speech, so whenever I miss school, I pick up on my work and stuff. So you taking my rights away from school is not really fun for me because I'm in the same town. And I have friends and stuff, and I really do love my nurse that I do have. And I was getting how, I don't know who, but somehow someone was trying to get me a nurse, and I have medical needs, I don't want a random person doing. And I have ADHD called auto dysreflexia, which is a serious thing that not everyone can handle. Like, I could have a stroke and it's not handled right away. And I know for a fact if something happens, my family will sue. I'm not trying to be mean or anything, but I just want you guys to know that. And when I finally got back in school, I was very happy. And no one had anything against her. Until after-
Next up, Wayne Schobel.
I'm Wayne Schobel, Natalia's father. I just want to ask Dr. Sargent. The nurse had been in the school for a couple of months, and then all of a sudden, she can't go anymore. Help me understand, I just don't get it. I talked to the principal, the assistant principal, the guidance counselor, and asked them, is everything going all right with this nurse? They all said yes. You know, nobody ever voiced any concerns. I just don't understand what happened, you know? And I read the letter you gave to the nurse, and it clearly states that you were informed. So obviously, somebody told you, you were feeling new, so you didn't know any of this. So why was she allowed to go for a couple of months? You know, and I get that there's a statute, I read that. I'm not an attorney, I don't know if it's right or wrong, but help me understand why she could go for a couple of months, but not now. I mean, we don't have, like my wife said, there's a nursing shortage. When Natalia doesn't go to school, I have to take her to work with me. You know, it's not easy. So, I don't know. But why was she able to go for a couple of months? And yet, you know, not now. That's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Next up, Caroline DeMonica.
Hi, Caroline DeMonica, Herman. I noticed in Dr. Sargent's commentary prior to speaking that very little emphasis was put on the child, the student. It was a whole bunch of like logistical kind of like turning yourself into a pretzel to kind of justify the forced resignation of Haley as Natalia's nurse, okay? And of all of the battles that you could have picked in this arena, I can't believe you picked this one. And so coming from my background of reviewing quality of services delivered to children, this is what I have to say. So this affects a child's right and right here in our community. A young student with significant physical disabilities depends on a registered nurse who is also a board member to attend school safely on Thursdays and Fridays. For four months, this nurse ensured that this child could learn alongside peers. These nursing services were tailored to this child's unique needs and respected the family's role in decision-making, ensuring her education aligned with their shared goals. This was child-centered and family-driven care. This nurse's support and assistance allowed this child to thrive in a typical classroom rather than being isolated at home. It fostered inclusion and growth, and it was delivered right here in Herman, keeping a child connected to her school and peers. This was community-based care in the least restrictive environment for this kid. In rural Maine, where nurses are scarce, finding a replacement is extremely difficult. The forced removal of this nurse essentially robbed this child's access to education, undermining her progress and her inclusion. This student had accessible services and ensured that she could learn alongside peers, which did foster her inclusion, her dignity, and her growth. Schools, families, and agencies must work together to ensure seamless care for students who require it to succeed academically. Consistent, quality-driven care depends on this partnership. Herman School's commitment to students must be to honor and accommodate any student's need for youth-centered, family-driven care that is accessible, community-based, in the least restrictive environment to ensure they can attend school safely and excel academically. I'd love to say that your actions to force this nurse's resignation reflected these high standards of quality care and education that I can't. There was no consideration whatsoever to these principles when this decision was made. The students' well-being-
I'd like to ask for you to finish your public comment, please.
I will, thank you Stephanie. Thank you. The students' well-being and physical and mental health were not considered. Was the impact to her considered before you made this decision? I want, I'd like to have an answer to that, please. I'll just say, no, it wasn't, but this wasn't because of a conflict of interest, this was a retaliatory action waged against Haley Kizer, and we all know it. For the last couple of years, this board has repeatedly and blatantly treated Ms. Kizer with contempt. You've been rude to her, inconsiderate, belittling, and downright ignorant to her. Bold and brazen, as though you think no one's observing your behavior, but we are. I urge this board to collaborate with the family and nurses' agency to restore this child's nursing support. This decision did not reflect our values as a community. And I have one more question. I would like to know if there are statutory exceptions, where this derived from? Did a state official or the Department of Education notify you that this had to be terminated because it was illegal or complex? And I'd also like to know if you have the discretionary ability to make a waiver for this child to have her nurse back. Thanks.
Next up, we'd like to welcome Rick Burgess.
Rick Burgess, Crokin Road. I'm not a party to the situation, I don't know the Schobels. I do know most of the school board members. I began reading reports of what was taking place, making my own observations. I've called and spoken to several school board members. I called an attorney friend of mine to get an opinion. I researched the main statutes thoroughly, I read them about five times, and I see nothing in the statute that prohibits school committee member from performing the service that this nurse is performing because she's not being paid by us, the school, or anybody in the school. I'm not going to debate whether that's right or wrong. If there's evidence out, if it's the contrary, I'm certainly willing to listen to it. My point very simply is this, I don't think enough emphasis has been placed on the needs of this young lady. You've got a situation that seemed to have worked well for the last three or four months, and I would encourage the school committee to consider, one, allowing it to continue either on a permanent basis, or if not, at least a waiver for the completion of the school year so that she doesn't suffer, then she can continue her education. I think you owe at least that much to her, and I'd like to see where you come from in terms of your reference, that there is a prohibition for what she's doing in the statute. I don't see it.
Thank you. Next up, we'll move on to resignations. We have four resignations, and we'll take them as stated on the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve Megan-
I don't want to know if she could come back up and talk. She remembered something she wanted to say.
Absolutely.
Also, being in that stairwell was very scary, hearing loud the sound, because I suffered from PTSD because when I was three years old, I was in a van accident, and it nicked my spinal cord, and I only have one good horn, so I couldn't even really cover my ears to deal with the sound. And what was really sickening was they told me my grandparents knew about this and they were okay with it. And they would tell everyone that I was out there. And I told my brother, he was going to really sacrifice his life to get off the UDC bus and go in that school and get it. And I can't even really breathe good if I'm sick and stuff, because I don't have good ones. So imagine what would have happened if that smoke got in my lungs. You really could have sacrificed my life. And well, it was very, very sickening, and saying that the firefighters were okay with me getting in there.
Dr. Sargent, I'd like to ask you to follow up on that, please. That's the first that I'm hearing of that, and so I would like to have that looked into right away, please.
Chair, may I just ask a question? I thought that the superintendent made a statement if I wanted to speak to what she was saying. Did she say that? Speak to the situation. If folks have listed their contact information on the sign-up sheet, I'm happy to get back to them. Did you know, I was asking, you said at the end that I want, the committee member wanted to speak to the situation, so I'm asking for permission to address the situation or the historical context of how we got here. And if I don't do it here, I will do it elsewhere. So. Here at the chair, Madam Chair, I'm asking, do you want me to address these, clarify for the committee, where we, no one on this committee ever spoke to me other than Mr. Reynolds?
Well, in the letter, it stated to reach out to us, and so you haven't, so I'd like to move on to-
Actually-
-the motion to approve-
That's inaccurate.
-the summer credit recovery program.
That is inaccurate. I gave my answer while I was in the office, that I would not be going anywhere. I gave my answer. In fact, you, when I emailed you and asked you about the letter and asked you to forward it to me, you said that you didn't know what I was talking about.
Yep, because you asked for April 15th. We're gonna now move on to-
But I want to address it.
Do we have a motion-
I will address it elsewhere.
Do we have a motion to approve Megan Garby?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I've tried.
We're gonna take a five-minute recess, so we'll be back. Okay, well now resumed, do I have a motion to approve Megan Garby for the high school English summer credit recovery program?
So moved.
I said point of order.
Do I have a second?
Point of order, we were still addressing, I'd ask for you to please take it offline with Dr. Sargent. They can go from both of us. It's easier if I address it. The answer is no.
The answer was no, but let's move on.
That wasn't the answer, the answer was you went to recess.
Okay, so we're on a motion, we have a first, do we have a second?
And I did a point of order.
I understand.
You can't just, you can't just ignore me, I'm doing a point of order.
The public addresses the chair and the superintendent, and they follow up as needed with the follow-up here. I'm asking for you to work with Dr. Sargent on this, so we can come to a resolution, please.
The superintendent gave the opportunity at the end of her speech, and I asked for clarification, that I could address the things, the concerns. And then you made a false accusation about that I did not respond, so I would like to just clarify, I can do it here or I can do it elsewhere, I just said that. And asking to clarify, I might as well do it.
I'm asking for us to move on. Do we, do we, do we have a second?
Why wouldn't you? You guys are all saying.
Okay. Any discussion? Any abstentions? All those in favor? All those opposed?
So what was the motion on? The motion was on accepting resignations and not my point of order, Megan Garby for the summer credit recovery program.
You have to motion on the point of order. You cannot move on from a point of order. Read the rules. You can't make up the rules as you go.
So, back to the vote, all those in favor and all those who opposed? All those in favor of Megan Garby English Summer Credit Recovery Program? All those opposed? Unanimous, motion carries. Do I have a motion for Ryan Garby Summer Credit Recovery Program?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any abstentions? Any abstentions? All those in favor? Unanimous. Next, do we have a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to employ David Nason?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Any abstentions? All those in favor? Unanimous, motion carries. Next, I move to approve the superintendent's recommendation to employ Lacey Guthrie. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll both, no, so moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any abstentions? All, okay. All those in favor? Unanimous, motion carries. Next, do we have a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to employ Alex Demmers?
Move to accept. Second.
Any discussion? Any abstentions? All those in favor? Unanimous, motion carries. Next, do we have a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation of the in-house transfer of Maria Roche? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any abstentions? Two abstentions. All those in favor? Unanimous, motion carries. Next, I move to approve the superintendent's recommendation of the in-house transfer of Ashley Stowe?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Any abstentions?
Element.
All those in favor? Unanimous, motion carries. Next, do we have a motion to approve the renewal of the N W E A contract?
Actually, it's a new item.
Okay, yes.
For public comment related to finance.
No, it's under, it's under the committee reports. Did the public wish to speak about the finance items that we have? Close public comment. Do we have a motion to approve the renewal of the N W E A contract?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
There is no other option for school standardized testing, correct?
Thank you for the question. This, this is the assessment platform that the state of Maine has chosen for their standardized testing. My understanding is that school districts did not used to have to pay for it, but now districts must contract for that assessment annually.
Any other discussion? Any abstentions? All those in favor? Unanimous, motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the Tyler Technology Absence and Substitute Module Contract?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Quick question. I did notice when I was looking at the warrants that we had some billing for that substitute. It was like a portion of that. Is that because we have a section for this year that we're testing that? Or is that full price for next year?
I, I would have to see the bill that you're asking about, but I believe the one that is in the warrant is for the time clock portion of our, it's, it's the same or different than what this.
It did say, it did say substitute on it. So I was confused.
I have to see the bill.
It was about $12,000. Okay.
I'll take a look and get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Any abstentions? All those in favor? Unanimous, motion carries. Next, do we have a motion to approve the change from Horace Mann Flexible Benefits Plan to Maine School Management Flexible Benefits Plan?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Bid out for those services? For, for insurance type services and benefits. I thought we were supposed to do bids for those.
I, I'm not sure that this qualifies as an insurance plan for that. This is voluntary withholding on the, that an employee contributes for the flexible spending plan. It's not the actual insurance, which we would have to go up to bid for.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any abstentions? All those in favor? All those opposed? Unanimous? Yep. We had no school committee members absent. Old business. Did anybody wish to speak for public comment?
Chairman, you have a point of order on the table. You cannot move on past that first. Second, why do you continue to try to silence her? Do you guys like lawsuits and national attention? Because the next call I make is Fox News in New York City. You need to let this woman speak. There are people here she can clarify. If the superintendent gets to clarify her side, she gets to clarify her side. You're going to end up in another lawsuit with your name on it.
Thank you. Next up, for the item of consideration of the trust for indemnification, would this?
Excuse us, since we didn't have any.
This item was tabled last time. Would the committee like to revisit this item?
What do you mean by revisit? I mean, it's on the agenda, so we're going to discuss it.
It, it was tabled. And so to be brought back from the table and needs to have a motion and a second and a vote.
It's on the agenda, correct?
It's old business and it was tabled from last time.
Now it's an agenda item.
It can come back on the table if the committee would like to revisit this item. So that's what I'm asking everybody.
Well, that's clever. So go ahead.
All right. Did anybody like to revisit this item?
So the, so the community can understand the process of how this goes. So basically, there's an agenda item. She's now saying that it needs a motion in order to be discussed. If nobody makes a motion and they were going to say, I can't make a motion because it would be a conflict of interest. So if nobody up here makes a motion, then they will say that they can't discuss it.
Robert's rule says once an item is tabled, to bring it back off the table or far as a motion, a second and a vote.
It is on the agenda.
So.
Yeah, exactly.
Next up for new business, I'd like to open it up for public comment.
This, this has got to stop. Point of order. Chair, point of order. You did not even finish the indemnification request. It's on the agenda as a discussion point. You have never not made a motion for something on the agenda. This is out of control.
Would any of the committee want to weigh in on that item and revisit, revisit it?
What are you afraid of, man? Let us speak.
Me? Next, we'll move on to new business. I'd like to open it up for the public if anyone wanted to speak about the new business items listed below.
We'd rather hear her speak. Yeah.
Danielle?
Danielle Higbert-Herman, thank you. I just have a couple of questions. I noticed on this agenda, the policies that were being replaced, they weren't printed in the strikeout format that they previously been done. And I was just hoping that in the future, you guys would go back to that format. It makes it easy as a community member to look at what the changes are easily and directly to them. So I'd appreciate that. With that in mind, I can't be pointed to my question, but I would like to know if the changes to the Title IX rules that are listed, if any of them would make it legal for a male to use a female's bathroom or a female to use a male's bathroom? If that wasn't allowed, would that be considered discrimination? Thank you.
Next, under Director of Special Services Job Description, do I have a motion to approve that updated job description?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. Welcome to Mr. Nason. I've heard nothing but amazing things about him over the years. So I'm happy to have him rejoin Herman. That being said, I noticed the new job description chose to include school nursing and health services. While I know that they have always overseen the school nurses, I was looking for clarification why this new addition to say and health services, what that includes or what that's trying to define or who oversees health services. Can you clarify what that, what the motivation was there and the theory and thinking?
In crafting the new job description, often anytime there's an opportunity to hire, and with Mrs. Badger retiring, we have the opportunity to hire. Her job description as it stands is nearly 10 years old. And so there's the chance to look at what are the needs of our community moving forward and how has that position changed over time? When we use the term school nursing and health services, it's meant to encompass a lot of, a lot of services within the school district. So right now, Mrs. Badger does oversee the school nurses that are full time assigned to the schools. Health services might also include such other factors as notification to the health commissioner when we have an outbreak and she makes sure that we follow policy on that. That would just be one of those.
So this wasn't intended to have any to do with the individual health services for?
That was not my intent.
Any other discussion? Any abstentions? All those in favor? Unanimous, motion carries. Next, the first reading of policies. We'll take them as a group, A through K. Should I have a motion to approve the first reading of those policies as listed?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion?
I second.
A, A through K, all of them?
Yes.
That's a group, he motioned, I second. At the counter of what the, or I, I, what you said a public comment, I'd actually spoke to superintendent about this today. A request that for the second reading, the request changes to policies to include markup so that we can compare current policies to proposed policies as a general manner of practice. And then the question I reference, policy A C A A R, which is student discrimination harassment and Title IX sexual harassment complaint procedures. Is it safe to assume that policies A C A A R I and A C A A R II will be removed because they will be outdated once the new A C R, or A C A A R is, is approved? So those should be rescinded. If that could be added, please.
Thank you.
And then I do have a, a request to amend on policy D G B student scholarships. I recommend that the requirements for eligibility of the student liaison scholarship be removed from the policy and eligibility requirements should be membered in to the Herman High School Scholarship Committee rather than have it be a part of policy. That will allow the committee to adjust the scholarship requirements without having to do a complete change to policy.
Thank you.
I don't know if you want a separate motion to amend or that can simply be a note that can be added during the second reading.
We, we can just add it. And when it comes back for second reading, we'll add that mutation. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I have a policy that was brought to me of the Title IX that I wanted to take into consideration. And I thought, where is such a popular conversation that we really should, policies A through E really should come in a workshop format so that we all can have a chance to weigh in and share. When I was doing my research from 2019, 2020's policies and then the amendments that I saw that Joma Woodsom had tried to add over the last few years. If we, if the first recommendation was to rescind them, but then they went and they drafted new policies. I've noticed that they've left certain language in there and they really, we need to be sure that what we're doing and we're not having an open discussion or open dialogue. And there is no functional way to do that clearly, evidenced by today. That a workshop would be the best way to have a conversation about these critical policies that are facing our school. And there are other options out there. Joma Woodsom gives us a guidance. They aren't the final say. And so I think we should, there's, there's no pressure to put this through today.
Did you have specific changes that you wanted to make to the policies that were listed?
I just said that I felt that they should be open so we can all have an open discussion, not just shove through a first reading. I have a policy here that I would like to share that I just received that is something that we could consider. Yep.
This is just first reading. So we can figure that. And then we could set up a meeting to go over this policy. Because I know there's a lot of people that are not all here tonight, but some came before.
Yep.
And they're very concerned about this. So I think we should meet as a entire group at a workshop and make sure we don't make a mistake.
Thank you. So any other discussion? So do we, do we take a vote on that as a motion so that we can have an open workshop?
Did somebody make a vote? Is that the motion you wanted to make?
The motion is to approve, approve this first reading, but to set up a.
You're looking to amend it? I'm hearing you say to have policies A, which ones?
A through E. Go to a workshop session so that the community and all board members can have a discussion to share policy ideas and options. As a, I guess, a special meeting.
Is there a second for that motion?
Yeah, second.
Any.
There's an amendment to the motion.
Yes, the original motion, yeah. Any discussion on that amendment?
We can approve the first reading and then do the workshop.
Right.
Or the second. So we can approve the original motion.
We can approve the first reading. And then we can also have the superintendent set up a meeting where the public and the school board can meet and do a workshop on it.
But we won't have a first reading because one, we're not reading them and two, we're not having. Usually a first reading is when it's all been worked out and it's all ready to go. And then you guys pretty much sign off on it.
No, that's the second reading.
That's the final.
But it's, it's okay. Either, either way, it doesn't matter.
So the original motion on the table was to approve policies A through K with the suggestions that Brian had. And Haley, you had a suggestion to set up for the second reading a workshop. Am I understanding correctly?
Yes.
Any other discussion? Any abstentions? All those in favor? Unanimous, motion carries. Next, United Technology Center Cooperative Agreement, including the crosswalk?
I move, I move to approve the U T C cooperative agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just, I'll add that the U T C rep, and if you look at the last page of your cooperative agreement, it's crosswalk. And it's a great step forward for the U T C community or for the C T E community. It allows four credits to be standardized across the U T C participating schools. And then the crosswalk allows certain courses that are core for graduation requirements to be applied. So now U T C students can get math credits,[1718.24]
So now U T C students can get math credits, visual arts credits, um, or applied science credits, depending on the course that they take, of those four courses per, per year. So it's a great step forward and I strongly support this, uh, this cooperative agreement.
Any other discussion?
I, I'll be abstaining from this vote just because we already voted in R C eighty-seven on it, uh, but I am firmly in this. It's an excellent job.
Thank you for adding that. Thank you very much. So two abstentions? All those in favor? Unanimous, motion carries. Next, do I have a motion to approve the five warrants below as listed?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any abstentions? All those in favor? Unanimous, motion carries. Next, do I have a motion to exec, enter executive session pursuant to one M R S A four oh five six A to discuss compensation of employees at eight oh three P M?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, motion carries.
Will we keep making a motion, did you say, on this after? Will there be a motion on this item?
Return from executive session at eight eighteen. I make a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendations as discussed in executive session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any abstentions? All those in favor? Unanimous, motion carries. I make a motion to enter executive session pursuant to one M R S A four oh five six D discussion of labor contract negotiations with the Herman Education Association Support Staff at eight nineteen P M. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Return from executive session at eight forty-four P M. I move to adjourn the meeting at eight forty-four P M. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, we should say no action.
Yeah, thank you, Tony. No action needed. Thank you, Tony. All those in favor? Unanimous, motion carries.